So we'll call the meeting to order. So all please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one remission under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any additional agenda or consent items? I don't believe there were. I invited Mrs. Cheeseman to begin our delegations this evening. State Rep. Cheeseman to update us on what's going on in Hartford. And so we'll go to delegations. Mrs. Cheeseman, you're here to serve the great citizens of our town.
I think you wanted to make me an agenda. I would say you have questions, but...
Right.
You know where to find me if you have questions. It's your choice.
Let me feel about that. Do you want to add? Do you think there might be some questions? Do you want to add to the agenda? Or we just get the update tonight?
That's fine.
Great.
That's fine. Well, as you will be aware, just last Thursday, last Wednesday night, the Senate passed the compromise budget, thirty-three to three. Last Thursday, the House met and passed the compromise budget, one hundred and twenty-eight to twenty-one. Both margins were sufficient to override any gubernatorial veto where there were one forthcoming. Obviously, you now know the governor signed the budget. The one line item veto he did was on the hospital tax. He and OPM maintained that the language in the budget agreement is not sufficient to generate the federal funding. My understanding is leadership met with the hospitals, agreed that the language was fine. It will be fixed. I'm not quite sure at what point, whether we go in and override his line item veto or draft new language to tweak that. So this was a truly bipartisan budget. Both sides got together. There was give and take on both sides. I found it very telling in the House. The number of Democrats and Republicans who voted against it was virtually identical. So it led me to believe this was probably the best deal we were going to get. There are some really good structural changes that certainly my caucus has been advocating for, for a long time. We will finally have a true state spending cap of the variety that was proposed when the income tax was passed. We will have a bond cap of $1.9 billion. There will be a revenue cap. You can't consider 100% of the revenue when you build the budget. You have to create an automatic reserve of money that goes into a rainy day fund to replenish that. There's a volatility cap. Excess revenue goes into the budget reserve fund, and that money will then go to pay down past unfunded liability toward employee pensions and health care. Things that will help municipalities. An arbiter cannot, has to eliminate 15% of a town's fund balance when you're looking at how much you can pay in a board. So basically, you can't look at the entire fund balance and say, well, you've got all this money, you can put it toward salaries. The minimum budget requirement is altered for boards of edg. The prevailing wage for new construction has been raised from $400,000 to $1 million. Binding arbitration, you don't, the arbiter is no longer limited to choosing either the last best offer from either party. They could pick something in between. So if you came in with 2% and the, you know, school came in at 10%, he could pick somewhere in the middle. He doesn't have to pick one or the other.
Great.
So that's good.
That's him.
There are, as far as the town is concerned, as opposed to the millions of dollars that East Lime was likely to lose under the governor's, both initial budget and his bare bones budget, our cut, including ECS funding and municipal aid, is about $450,000. So it's, we're in a much better place than we were. And I think that the, you know, the push behind passing this bipartisan budget was the understanding on both sides of the aisle that there were many, many, many towns that were suffering very badly under the governor's executive order. And it was, you know, in our interests, in everybody's interest, and certainly in the taxpayers' interest to pass the budget. There were, let me just go through my list. We phase in exemptions on income tax liability for pensions, annuities, and social security. We are now required to vote on state union contracts. Prior to that, if the legislature took no action for 30 days, the contracts were deemed approved. Now, we will have to vote affirmatively or negatively when employee contracts are negotiated. No contract can last beyond four years, which is great. There were, we managed to preserve a lot of the spending on social services, things like care for kids and home health care, things that were being very badly gutted under the governor's executive order and indeed in the other budget. Those things are going to be funded. We had tried, the Republican budget that passed had tried to change, go out to 2027 and say after that, these are going to be the changes, you will have to contribute more to your pension. That was not approved. We're creating a commission on fiscal stability and economic growth made up of 10 of the most powerful CEOs in the state to help the state as we move toward creating a better business climate. Part of the reason that the money went to Hartford was the consensus on the part of the CEOs that we could not allow the state capital go bankrupt. I know my caucus, a lot of them felt very strongly that we should not be bailing Hartford out. On the other hand, it's $40 million over two years as opposed to the, I think, $100 million that the governor wanted. There were tax increases. Taxes were increased on cigarettes and snuff by 45%. The homeowners property tax credit is now limited to seniors and people with dependents. There are fees on brokers. When you, when a car is traded in, there'll be a $35 fee on the dealer, which of course will be passed on to the consumer. If you use Uber or Lyft, there's going to be a 25 cent fee on the ride. And the hospital tax of the billion dollars, between $700 and $800 million is an increased tax on the hospitals. This was negotiated with the hospitals in return for increased Medicaid funding. And the way it will be structured this time, the hospitals are confident that they will actually see that increased funding, unlike last time when they saw the funding and then as the budget deficit increased, the amount they received decreased dramatically. There were no income tax hikes. There were no sales tax expansions. There had been proposed a tax on every cell phone line, a secondary home tax, a restaurant tax, a hotel tax. There were attempts to broaden the Family Medical Leave Act. Anyway, there were, there were things that didn't happen. There was, as I said, we had a good, bad, and ugly list. But it was, as I say, there were the same number on both parties who seemed they couldn't support it, and I think that was an indication that was the best we were going to get at the time. This is not a cure-all. There are still deficits forecast once we get out of this biennium. We didn't get in this mess overnight. We're not going to get out of it overnight. But certainly, some of the structural changes we've seen, I think with any luck, will demonstrate to bondholders and businesses and residents that we are serious about changing the climate in Connecticut, trying to do things that will encourage people to stay, and certainly in the short run, preventing those devastating cuts that were going to hit towns like East Lime and Salem. So, so that's the summary. You know, I was relieved when the governor passed it. And the other, the other piece of legislation, which I was very proud, I know Senator Farmicus worked very hard on, and both Representative McCarty and I, and the rest of the southeastern Connecticut delegation worked very hard on, was the so-called Millstone Bill, which opens the way, subject to a study by PURA and DEEP, for Millstone to bid into the zero-carbon energy contracts. And I don't have to tell you what an important employer they are in this region, what an important and supportive corporate citizen they are. Half our electricity, virtually all of our carbon-free power, and given the economics of nuclear power plants, they were serious about closing the plant. So I think we've, the study still has to go ahead, but I think in the short term, we bought ourselves in time. I'm confident that we'll be able to reach a solution that will be, as the study says, in the best interest of the ratepayers, in the best interest of the state, our economy, and our environment, and our employment. So I will stick around for a while if you have any questions later, or as I say, you know where to find me.
You had a heck of a freshman year, didn't you? Thank you for serving us. Much appreciated. Who's next?
Ron Rando, 194, Boston Post Road, East Lime. First thing I'm going to talk about is Mr. Nickerson calling me a liar. Okay? I don't lie, Mr. Nickerson. Everything I said is the truth. The swimming pool, everything I talked about. I didn't lie about anything. The tennis court, I told you about it. You cost the taxpayers $119,000.
I wasn't in office.
You...
I wasn't in office.
You can't talk to me. You understand? You can't talk to what I'm saying.
So you can, Miss Cheeseman?
Okay. I can tell you anything I want, and then you can talk at the end, just like you tell me, okay? Now I think I know why Karen Rack doesn't come to the meetings anymore. She husband probably was harassed too by the town, like a few people got harassed, because they were working for Mr. Furman. Mr. Furman is my grandson, and I'm going to set you straight and the rest of you people. Mr. Furman never came to me and asked me about running for the first selectman's office. He talked to me about it. I said, that's, you've got to make up your own mind and do what you, I will stay out of it because you're my grandson. And I haven't done anything. You don't see any signs in front of my house? I haven't paid any, for any ads on the radio? Mr. Furman is handling his campaign with his friends. I tell him, if he asked me for information, I would tell him. He hasn't asked me, and that's guaranteed by me, 100%. I haven't given any ideas, which some people in this town think so. I, I listen, I think Holly and maybe Paul did work hard on this budget, okay? But when this budget is done in two years, we're $4.6 billion in the red again. We're going to go through this again, just like we did this term. They're going to go up to Hartford, and then they're going to dick around, and they're not going to pass a budget till the end of the term. And we're going to scramble the same thing. They should have cut 5,000 people right off the top of the state, the state, yeah, you know what I mean, employees, 5,000. Start right off, that's where they should have started. This budget, as far as I'm concerned, is a horse and pony show. They taxed the hospital. Now, if they'll get the money back, they're going to get more money back, sure. But we're still going to be $4.6 billion in the red come at the end of two years. That's that. Now, let's see, what else do I got here for Mr. Nickerson, who called me up on the radio and called me a liar? I don't lie, and I can tell you two or three times that you lied to me, twice right in my gun shop. Okay. I have a question about our legal fees for Darrell's Pond. I think that, I don't know, I don't have the exact figures, but I think it costs somewhere, we're paying off the gentleman that had the property and legal fees. We had, we spent something like a million bucks, from what I understand. I'm not sure. I know the exact figures, but I think it's pretty close. When we bought Darrell's Pond, we paid $4.3 million to put a water tank up there, which we didn't do. We went, ran it through Mr. Lombardi's property, gave him a nice road, we fired hydrants, blacktopped it. And I don't know, somebody got a building lot there for half price or something. I don't know who, but, but we, I think we could have bought Darrell's Pond for a lot less than $4.3 million. And I'd like to know what we're going to do with it. Now I hear that we might put a doggie park up there for $4.3 million. That's really something. $4.3 million for a doggie park. That's pretty good. Let's see. Moody's ratings, I wonder how we're doing? When I sat on that board up there in the 90s, when I made some statements that we could do this and do that, but we need to keep our fund at $6 million to $7 million, $7 million in reserve account. Well, okay, it's not, it's about $5 million now, maybe, something like that. Failure to sustainably balance the financial operations involving states for our decline in financial services. Very true. This, I think Moody is looking at our finances in this town, and I don't know how it looks to them, but some of the stuff that I hear, our rating might have to drop a little bit because we're not financially in good shape right now. And what else we got here? Oh, and one other thing that you, I said on Lou Yelsey's was $40,000 free water meters and set up another water department. Well, we gave him $40,000 worth of water meters. We got a master meter up there, but they got meters on all our apartments, and they're charging them the water rates, so we got two water companies in town, as far as I'm And I said something about the standby pumps, $17,000 a month for two standby pumps down there by Dad's Restaurant. I don't think that's a lie. We should have fixed them a long time ago. Costco hasn't come yet, and I don't think it's coming. We could have had Costco in two years, and we've been up and running. Okay? But a couple of reasons it didn't get up there, you know what it is, I don't have to tell you. And Mr. Brain's project and Costco's project would have been about $24 million bucks to where we would have got some tax money in the town. But you harassed Jim for, cost him probably $138,000. And I talked to Jim for five years he was doing this, five years. You gave him the runaround. Water, wet, wet grounds up there, and he's a big wall now. I told him five years ago to sue you, but being a good Catholic boy, he wouldn't do it. So he had to suffer. And then I had a gentleman come in my shop today. Never seen him before, didn't know who he was. But he told me the most sarcastic people he ever talked to was the first selectmen and the zoning people down there. Now, I don't know this guy, and he don't know me. We had a businessman up in Flanders who sold one business in Groton, I believe, and another business he's selling in East Lime. And I asked him, I says, why are you moving out? He says, this town and the board and the first selectmen are the most anti-business people I ever met in my life. Says, I'm selling, I'm going to Florida. Hmm. I had three people come in the shop last week. One guy sold me some guns. Another guy just wanted to talk. They're moving out. They're leaving East Lime to go into South Carolina and Florida. They can't afford to here. Then I had a mover come in the shop, bought a firearm, and got talking. He's in, he's, he's told me that 1,800 families a month are moving out of Connecticut. He doesn't know how many are moving in, but he has moved an average of 1,800 a month out. And then I had another gentleman that has a outfit over in Groton, and he rents trucks. And he said, you just can't imagine how many people are renting trucks. They're moving from good old Connecticut to the same places, Florida, North Carolina, and South Carolina. Why? Why are you moving? Why? Connecticut's a beautiful state. It's beautiful, but we can't afford to live here. People, they take care of certain people, and the rest of us are paying. You know, you raise cigarettes, 45 cents a pack. You know who'd get hurt on that? Not me, not you, not anybody up there. The poor people in state that smoke. $150 for a pack of, for a cotton cigarette. It's outrageous to tax the poor people like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rando.
Mr. You're welcome, sir. About 10 minutes left. You're welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here tonight to read into the record a public document which is dated November 16th, written on a town computer by Mr. Nickerson, Mark Nickerson. And I'm going to read the letter to you, or the email that was sent to me. "Joe, last night got out of hand. I apologize for fueling the flames. My feelings remain this: Members of boards and commissions should not sue or file formal complaints to state agencies, in parentheses, FOI, Department of Health, Army Corps. I don't think that is proper behavior for someone willing to step up to serve our town. In fact, I find it treasonous. I could never support anyone who would do such a thing and then expect to be appointed on a commission. You are correct that you have a right to do so, however, that does not mean that you are right. I would urge you to work with others, including me, to make the town better. If you see a problem, any one of my department heads or I would be happy to sit down and discuss this situation. Let's not ever move a situation outside of our town. As for appointments, no one in this town should feel like they have a lifetime appointment to any board or commission. Their terms expire for a reason. I have my reasons for what I have done concerning your wetlands and warden appointments. I stand by my decision, and I was backed and encouraged by members of the public, members of the Wetland Commission, who, in parentheses, requested that I remove you, and the Board of Selectmen unanimously. What is done is done. You can hate me for it, carry resentment, I don't care. I have moved on, and I hope you will too. Your threat to me that you would be a negative force in my life and block the positive progress in this town concerning, those comments were made in an emotional state, and I will take that into consideration. I too said some things that I probably now regret. However, your constant public comments for the past two years in the day blogs, in parentheses, in a loop, X-Max the spot, and live for tomorrow, do not help our relationship or build any confidence that you are a team player interested in helping the town or my administration. Your most recent ones are clearly personal. Joe, you have served the town for many decades. I hope that this relationship will continue, but only if you're willing to be a team player and to not become my adversary. Making this personal with one another is not working professionally. To make this a better does not do anybody any good. Mark Nickerson, First Selectman." Now I want to make a few comments about some of the things. I guess we have the KGB in town, because I had to change my blog name three times because apparently Mr. Nickerson has some kind of a pipeline in the day and was able to get these. We know we're living in a KGB state. Most of the time, FOI, almost all the cases that I took against the town, I won. And the town is far better off from what I did because we should have open government in this town, and that's what the FOI is all about. If you want to violate FOI, you deserve to be taken in and chastised for it. As far as the Army Corps of Engineers is concerned, I wasn't on the Wetlands Commission when I called the Army Corps of Engineers. And I did that not because of the town of East Lime, I did that because the developer was violating the wetland regulations. Army Corps of Engineers came in here, and the town took it over, and it ended up costing the town to the developer a million dollars, and over $750,000 in legal fees to defend the fact that they screwed up. As far as the Wetlands Commission is concerned, I am totally at a loss. The tree warden, I had over 500 hours of training to become a certified state tree warden. But for some strange reason, and what it has to do with his signs, apparently, that's what I'm gathering, no one ever told me. But there is a document, it's chapter 451, Public Trees and the Tree Protection Examining Board, and these are the state regulations that a tree warden is sworn to uphold. One of the duties of the tree warden is to remove signs. It doesn't say may, it says shall. From public roads, it's a tree warden's responsibility to pick up all the signs that are plastered all over this town. And by the way, signs for the election belong on private property, not on town property. It's a disgusting mess. There's so many signs out there, you can't tell who the hell is running. But I guess that's the mentality we have in this town. I don't accept your apology, Mr. Nickerson. Okay? I just want you to know that. Because what happened the night of that meeting, quite frankly, was that you made a comment to me as you walked out the door that you weren't going to reappoint me to the, to the Wetlands Commission. Fine. And my comment to you was, says you have to get reelected. Okay? That was what happened. You then chose to follow me out the door, and you were going to attack me, and the town attorney had to grab you.
That's not true.
It's not true?
No.
Don't call me a liar, sir, because there are a lot of people that saw it.
Town attorney had nothing to do with it.
I wish the town attorney was here. He grabbed you. You want to lie? Be a liar. But that's the truth. I don't lie. Never have and never will.
Does anyone else have anything to say before I let Mr. Rando go, and then we'll go on to our meeting? You're the last one, Mr. Rando.
Just another little gripe I got, sir. Ron Rando, 194, Boston Post Road, East Lime. I got the agreement that the town of East Lime and the McCooks signed here. I've read the whole thing, and it said, I'll read number four. No part of said premises shall be used for any manufacturing business or commercial purpose of any nature, nor for any residential purpose except as herein, herein after expressly provided. No trailer or other mobile or temporary place of, shall be permitted on any part thereof. No fire shall be allowed on any beach where it may ignite grass or bushes or split the rocks nor...
rocks, nor elsewhere unless special permit and under closest supervision." And then it says, "No alcoholic beverages shall be allowed on the premises." Now, where did this permission come for these motorhomes to park up there on the jet ski day? And you're not gonna tell me there was no alcoholic beverages consumed? So maybe the Board of Selectmen can give me a rundown on how this happened and who okayed it. But with this, uh, this deed here, as far as I can see, what you did up there was illegal. And I think your music stand up there should not be there. That's illegal unless your Mr. McCook's, uh, I mean, um, maybe ghost or something gave you the okay to do that. But as I read this, uh, I'm not a lawyer, but, uh, um, I guess that's about it. But I would like, uh, somebody to, uh, give me, uh, something about how this happened and who okayed it. Thank you very much.
We'll move on to our meeting. Approval of minutes, special joint meeting September twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen.
Move to approve the minutes of the special meeting of September twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. That was the special joint meeting as submitted.
Second. Could you just pull that microphone a little closer to you, Roseanne? We don't want any, we might not be able to hear your voice. Uh, has motions been made and seconded? Any corrections, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? We have also the regular meeting of October fourth, two thousand seventeen.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of October fourth, two thousand seventeen as submitted.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
I'm gonna abstain, I wasn't here for that.
Okay. Consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of November first, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second.
That has been seconded. Thank you. Any comments, corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? The first order of the new business is the authorization of the First Selectmen to sign the E P, EMPG grant application for two thousand seventeen, eighteen. This used to be called the DEMHS, or D E M H S. I think that's different at the state level. The Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. We have to do this every year at this time, and this is just an agreement with, uh, the now EMPG for the grants for the homeland security information. And equipment.
Move to authorize the First Selectmen to sign the EMPG grant application of two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen may enter into, with, and deliver the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Service and Public Protection, formerly the Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. And further resolved that Mark C. Nickerson, as First Selectman of the Town of East Lime, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, and to do and to perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary and appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing the, delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. The undersigned further certifies that Mark C. Nickerson now holds the office of First Selectmen and that he has held the office since January seventh, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Okay. For the record, I am now the, um, I guess Vice Chair of the Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for Region Four. Just so you know that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Review and approve the Board of Selectmen, two thousand eighteen, regular meeting schedule. The only conflict that you'll see, this is three B on your agenda, only conflict is November twenty-first, which is the third Wednesday in November, is the night before Thanksgiving. I left it on there because I can't go a week earlier. It's Board of Finance meets, and of course I gotta be there as well. But we'll leave it on there. If, if it's pressing business, we'll have the meeting. If not, we can, we can always strike it.
I would prefer to just change the date of the meeting now so that we can set it on our calendars.
Or do you want to just dismiss it and have one in November? Where else would we put it? Problem is that there's meetings every night, and, and I can't go the week before. Uh, I, I was just thinking we could have a regular meeting. We could have a regular meeting that night. It's, it's a regular workday. What do you, what do you?
I'm gonna be stuffing the turkey.
I know, I won't be. But i- i- listen, in November, it gets a little quiet anyway. We might not need a second meeting. We could also have a special meeting and move the date. So I, that's why I kinda left it there, rather than make up a date on the calendar. We don't know if we're gonna need one or not.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
I'm okay with leaving it.
Let's just leave it for now, and if we need to have a special meeting, we always can have a special meeting. So, um, do we need a motion to approve?
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen, two thousand eighteen, regular meeting schedule as submitted.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any comments other than what we've already talked about? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
I'm gonna abstain because I know I'm not coming.
Okay. All right. Three C. Authorize the First Selectmen to sign the Yukon Climate Resiliency Circa Grant. Mr. Geishel couldn't be with us tonight. The, um, so I'll try to get through this. I think you know what this is. The town applied for and was awarded Circa Grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. The expenditure of the funds for the procurement of professional consultant services to assist the completion of the East Lime Coastal Resilience, Climate Adaptation, and Sustainability Project. Basically, this project will not only increase East Lime's resilience and sustainability by establishing sound land use policies and regulations, in other words, kinda like our J L U S with the military bases, this would be very, very specific to resiliency and sustainability around our shorefront and our rivers, but may also improve the town's community rating with the, with the National Flood Insurance Program. I actually don't think we can get a higher rating than we have. We're one of the only two towns in, in this side of the state that receives the top discount ratings for, for the National Flood Insurance Program. But we'd be able to sustain that discount, extend that discount. And this will also be a model used for other coastal communities. This is a federal grant that goes to Yukon, and then they decide where they want it to go along the shoreline. And I just saw that New Haven was going through the same thing, or in and around the New Haven area. I saw a news piece on it two nights ago for their results of Sandy and all the wa, washed up around the Bramford and New Haven areas.
I will move to authorize the First Selectmen to sign the Yukon Climate Resiliency Circa Grant, whereas the Board of Selectmen on June seventh, two thousand seventeen unanimously voted to approve a special appropriation in the amount of fifty thousand dollars in the C N R E Fund Thirty-two to revenue and expenditure account titled Circa Grant, Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation, and forwarded to the Board of Finance for approval. And whereas the Board of Finance on June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen unanimously voted to approve a special appropriation in the amount of fifty thousand dollars in C N R E Fund Thirty-two to revenue and expenditure, expenditure account titled Circa Grant, Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation. And whereas on June twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, a special appropriation in the amount of fifty thousand dollars in the C N R E Fund Thirty-two to revenue and expenditure account titled Circa Grant was approved at the town meeting, at a town meeting. It is resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes the Honorable Mark C. Nickerson, First Selectmen, to enter into, sign, and execute a cost reimbursement agreement, grant agreement, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars between the University of Connecticut and the Town of East Lime, Connecticut.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion that's been seconded. I, I failed to mention that we've already approved the funding, it's just the signing of the contract that sometimes our town attorney gets a little sticky on and really wants to make sure we are specific on that. So whereas this is grant money and we'll be spending someone else's money, we wanted to make sure we get this right. So, um, that's what we're authorizing tonight, is the signing of the contract. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? We'll appoint a Board of Ed representative to the Cable TV Advisory Council.
No.
That's been removed.
We're, we're moving that.
Um, we're, they're on table.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't get that memo. There is an, there is a communication in your folders from the Smith Harris House to attend their November board meeting. They, this is the second time they've tried to do this, but they keep picking dates that we typically are busy and have other events. I forget what it was last month, but we were all at it. It may have been that joint meeting. This one is on Veterans Day, and you'll all be invited to the ceremony on Veterans Green, which most of us take advantage of, and I believe it's a Saturday this year. Ex officio reports. Mrs. Hardy, you wanna start?
I don't have an ex officio this evening, but I asked the Secretary to send a letter to the Smith Harris Commission on behalf of the Board that we regret that no one from the Board will be able to attend.
Thank you. Mr. Salerno.
I covered zoning. On October fifth, there was a public hearing to opt out of requirements from Public Act seventeen one five-five. This is a temporary health structure, healthcare structure bill that was passed by the state which allows temporary healthcare buildings on residential properties. These are known as, I guess, granny pads. So there was a lot of discussion with the zoning commission. The zoning commission, um, voted to opt out or recommend that we opt out, which will then come before us for many reasons, including there's very little control. It could, they, they were concerned with, it could just be a trailer. Uh, there's very little control to, to document these and check on them, and also requires the storage of confidential health records. So they were gonna send something to us, who will probably see something soon. There was also just a coastal area management that was passed. The planning commission meeting was canceled yesterday. I have attended two building commission meetings. We got the schematic design estimate on the beginning of the month, and we had more discussion last month. Basically, what they're, they're doing is they've gone through, they've checked out, they've gone and looked a little more detail of what's going on with the asbestos abatement in the different schools. There have been some increases, some unforeseen things. One was an oversight on the, the Fire Marshal wants to have new alarm systems, fire alarms, but they're kind of old. And the more they dig into the school, they're finding a few more things. The good news is that we're still under budget because we were able to reduce owners' contingency. The farther we get in, the more we investigate, the more we can reduce our contingency. So they also have a few alternates on there. For example, the paved area behind Flanders Schools in rough shape. Anything that goes on an alternate would have to be approved by the Building Commission and the Board of Education. So they're just running numbers for certain things that were left off if they, they decide they, they want to add it. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Mr. Cunningham.
Well, I, I attended the Waterford, East Lime Shellfish Commission meeting on October nineteenth, and, and the, what was of great interest was Attorney Robert Avina spoke, and he gave an overview of the statutory authority for Wellscope and their charter, and what their jurisdictional framework is, and what things they can rule on, what things they can't. And I would refer anybody that is interested, particularly, you know, the topic that's been in front of them is the, uh, the grant application, or not grant application, but there is, uh, Niantic Bay Shellfish Farm LLC, which wants to operate an experimental commercial shellfish, uh, facility on the river, and there are people on either sides of the issue. And I think if, if people are interested, they could become better informed as to how the application project or process works, if they wanna look at the minutes and the notes from that meeting. So for those that are interested in that project, I would suggest they, they maybe either attend Wellscope meetings or look at their notes from that meeting. So, uh, it was very insightful. The other thing was, I attended the Historic Properties Commission meeting on October twenty-fourth, and as, I don't know if we spoke about this before, but they had their fundraiser, the, the Bike and Barbecue, and they did very well this year. I think they netted about ten thousand dollars, far better than the year before. They were really thrilled with that. The location of the Smith Harris House was an ideal location. They didn't have to worry about Racquet next State Park being open and having the additional expense of, uh, state guards opening the park. So, and it was well attended, and the word is getting out on that event. So I think next year, they'll do even better, and it was a nice, a nice return on their hard work. That's about it for me.
Thanks, Sam. Mr. Diggle.
On October sixteenth, I attended a public hearing of the Inland Wetlands Agency concerning a cease and desist order for a dock that encroached upon, uh, the, I forget the name of the river, down at Green Valley Lakes Road. And also, uh...
Is that Four Mile River down there?
Four Mile River, yes, I know. It's a tip of my thumb, thank you. During the hearing, there was discussion between the, the property owner and the town, and they're gonna give the property owner an opportunity to spend a little more time to try and resolve the issue with an adjoining property owner and the town. So that was continued to their next meeting, and was unable to stay for their regular scheduled meeting that night. On November, October seventeenth, I attended the Harbor Management and Shellfish Commission meeting. At that point, at that meeting, there was a, a public delegation from Mr. Tim Lonergan the Third regarding the, his planned, um, shellfish farm in, in the Niantic River. Also, um, there was a public statement made by Mr. Peter Harris from Wellscope Commission that supported the endeavor. The Harbor Management Shellfish Commission, uh, stayed their, stayed their ground regarding not providing a letter of endorsement or disapproval based on the fact that the farm is located in water-free portion of the river. There's also a discussion presented, I think by Deco Design Firm regarding the boat ramp that's down next to Boats Incorporated, which is a town-owned piece of property. The commission had previously approved the plan to modify that area, to make some repairs, and also to put in a, a floating dock to allow dinghies to be able to pull into that property from the river and have access to downtown. When that plan was shared with adjacent property owners that was concerned, it was encroached too much on the use of their property. So Deco brought a separate plan to the commission. The commission did not like it. Floating dock was moved to a fixed dock. There was, they raised concerns about trying to climb out of a dinghy onto a fixed dock. Tide levels would be unsafe for folks. So they encouraged Deco to get back in, in touch with the, with the town engineering department. I spoke with Mr. Begar and let him know that the commission was, was not satisfied with the revised plan, and hopefully they can work together to come up with something that meets the needs and provides a safe access for the public to remove themselves from the river and come downtown.
Right.
That's all I had.
Thank you. Did you ever talk about the dredging of Niantic River in that?
It has not come up recently. Several meetings ago, there was, you know, talk of Joe Courtney saying he was off to try and get some funding for dredging, but there's, there's no discussion.
I had some discussions since then, so I'll, I'll pull you back in the loop. We're trying to get the dredging done. The big problem is New York State and the dumping of the, the stuff. My report is, uh, is, uh, well, it's pretty simple. First of all, we had a major storm this, this Sunday night. So, so, oh, dark. So, oh dark, oh dark 30, we were up Monday morning at the EOC, trying to evaluate downed wires, downed trees, blocked roads, neighborhoods that were out. And I think we were at 60% out on Monday morning. We got it down to 20% on Tuesday, and this is Wednesday. And I just got a report, we've been at this every day since. Laurel Hill just came back on, Darrell's Ridge came back on. I don't know about Roxbury Court, and we've been working on that all day. Sandy has been fielding calls all day. Eversource was caught off guard. New England, I think, was caught off guard. You know, sometimes we get the trucks down from Massachusetts or northern New England. We couldn't because they got hit with the storm as well. I think they were slow to respond. I know the customer service was less than adequate. I'll be making my report as CEOs are asked to make reports about the performance of Eversource. I think we were underserved. I think our customers, as a customer, trying to get in and call in misinformation on their website, such as neighborhoods were energized and they weren't, which only fuels the miscommunication and fuels the fire, because then there's a panic among the people saying, it says I have power and I haven't had power for three days. So lots, I thought they learned their lesson with Sandy and Irene. They had made great strides, so they thought, but I think this caught them off guard. Thankfully, we're almost at 100%. I have not gotten the email, I've been waiting for it, that we are at 100%. So I'd like, would have liked to have made that announcement tonight, but the storm is still ongoing. The effects of the storm is still ongoing for many of our residents tonight, hitting day, night four without power. Election Day is Tuesday. Polls will be open 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you live on the north side of 95, chances are you're in District 1 and you go to the high school. And south of 95, that's District 2 and District 3, you'll report to the community center. And again, 8:00 AM, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And you can, if you're not a registered voter, you will be able to register that day at the registrar's office, which is located at the community center on the left wing. So if you are not a registered voter and you'd like to be part of this election process in the municipal elections, by all means, don't feel left out. Bring identification and come to the polls. Public comment? Mr. Miranda.
Just want to say a couple of things on this. You know, I was born here and I can remember the day, probably you people weren't around, maybe Roseanne was, but I don't think the rest of you are here, when you could walk across that river down there on scalping day and there was many, many scalps. And then, we were supposed to sewer the beaches, if I remember right, when they first passed this. And we were supposed to sewer Saunders Point and Pine Grove and the beaches, Old Black Point. And then we had a, I don't know whether he was a highly college-educated person, but they said, let's do away with the eel grass. Well, if you know why the eel grass was there, that's where your scalps got raised. Now, this young gentleman that wants to try, I mean, we've had Wadsworth tried to bring them back. Few people have tried. We didn't open the scallop season this year because there's not enough out there. But this young gentleman, this intelligent young man that I have met and talked to a few times, and somehow he's related to my wife, he's a real nice kid, he's got some good ideas how to bring some scalps back in that river. And you know, every time somebody wants to do something, there's somebody that says, we don't want it. Well, I can remember when I wanted to get the sewer at my house and Mr. Cheney was the first selectman. He says, you go out, Ron, and you get 26 people to sign the paper and you can have the sewer. And I said, Dave, that's, I'll do that. So I went out in two days and I got a little more than 26. And a gentleman that had a, well, then I think there were condos or apartments up there at Pheasant Run, he owned one and he didn't live in town. He rented it. Well, he came down to Dave Cheney and he bitched about have to pay for the sewer. Well, Dave canceled it. And what happened to that gentleman? He moved out of town. He sold it and moved to, I think he lived in Waterford, left the state about two months later, sold his place over there and left. So one time, I think they were thinking about putting in a refinery somewhere on the east coast and people complained about it. Then when the oil prices went up, they complained about paying high oil prices. But, you know, I don't think we should stop this gentleman from trying to do what he wants to do. Because if he can bring scalps back in this river like we had when I was a kid, it'll be a good thing for the town of East Lime. And I think they got a meeting on December 1st or something like that, open to the public. And I think everybody that's interested should go and speak their piece. I'm going to go, and I think there's a few other people I know that are going to go. Because I think it's a great thing for the town. And I think it's a great thing for Waterford, too. But they don't want to hurt, looking over there to those Ashagachi Hills, it might hurt that or something, I don't know. I haven't heard the whole story. But anyway, that's something that, the next thing I want to say is Mr. Nickerson stood up at the debate and talked about Mr. Trump as his president. Well, I'm going to tell you something, Mr. Nickerson, maybe you don't know. You should. Mr. Trump hasn't been in there in a year. It's the lowest unemployment in 17 years. 1.5 million people off food stamps. 3% the last two quarters. Mr. Obama never had more than one and a half, maybe two. 3% each quarter, which probably, and they figured it'd be less because of the hurricane. We got 80% less people coming across the border. Mr. Trump is doing a great job, and if the, if the people down there in Washington would leave him alone, he might do just the same thing that Ronald Reagan did. But we got to, the main thing down there is you got to clean out the swamp because you got Republicans, just like Mr. Nickerson said that he couldn't back that president. Well, we got Republicans down there. They're not Republicans, anyway. They're Democrats. So I just wanted to bring that up. I think Mr. Trump, he has done for this country already, pretty damn good. And if they let him do what he wants to do, if he can get this tax cut, you'll see things booming. Unemployment down, 17 years it never been so low. Just remember that.
Anyone else? John?
John Dravik, 18 Dravik Road. We're coming up on budget season again. Now, the representative just told you, the budget has gone up a billion dollars over the next two years in this biennial state budget. We're not going to get some money back, but what I'm having a problem with is you people, board, blame the Board of Finance, still there at fault, taxing us twice for the same item. Now, businesses, men like myself, taxpayers, we send our money to Hartford, they didn't send it back. So now the town wants to make that money up so life goes on as usual in East Lime. It's called double taxation. You're taxing us for the same item. I'm going to ask this board right now to give us a flat budget, not a dime more than you got this year, and if you can reduce it, reduce it. It's unfair to pass the load all back to the taxpayer. We've got less taxpayers in town, we've got less taxpayers in the state, and there's fewer people here. If you want to put Connecticut, push it further down into the death spiral, tax us some more? No. We all yell Hartford, you got to cut back and save money. They haven't. The budget still went up. So don't consider, because I have more control on a local level than I do up there, don't raise the budget this year. You have to make cuts, then you have to make cuts. If you want to push the rest of the business out, it's tough enough as it is. I just look at the mess up there on the Boston Post Road. We've had a little dink bridge project. You know, that was nothing but a hand-laid-up thing. It was built almost 100 years ago, held the road up just fine. It needed to be a little larger. You know how many million dollars that's costed federal funding to put that monstrosity in? It barely doubles the amount of capacity of water, the original culvert. Are you kidding me? But it's plugged up town. The state in their infinitum wisdom decided they were going to trim trees on 95. Great. It went down to single lane, traffic was backed up from that bridge all the way up to 395. You know what that does for the businesses in town? Golf is down. It's down a lot more now. I lost probably 10% of the business. I'm going to lose my tenant. He's not making any money. What about all the other little businesses along on Main Street? You people are great. You dumped a lot of money down on Main Street for plastic street lamps, doggy parks, whatever it is you do down there you think makes a big difference in town. Well, tax-wise, it hasn't panned out. We've dumped millions, but I haven't seen much come back in return. Just a lot of glowing estimates and, and what do they call that? Rose-colored glasses views. When are we going to start paying attention to the other end of town? Mr. Nickerson, you should have been screaming in Hartford. Holly, you should have been screaming, too. I'd like to see the Commissioner of Transportation up there hauled on a carpet and said, what the hell did you do? You know, you say, well, I don't have any control up there. You don't, but you should have been screaming for us. I feel like we were left out in the cold and so does just about every other business up on the Boston Post Road. Thank you.
Anyone else? Selectmen response. I'm going to start. We are, we are supporting, TJ Laundergin is the fellow's name, who with a scallop farm. And we've already, he's already shellfishing in our, in our bay with, I think they're oysters out in our bay. And we, of course, this project is being proposed as in Waterford. I'm glad it's not here because it really blew up. And frankly, it blew up because Wellsco's responsibilities from the state conflict with state, with town regulations are like, who's allowed to give the contract down? The state says Wellsco can, and the town's saying, oh, this is our waters, it's our jurisdiction. And there's a big conflict there. So, so we're going to send Holly and Paul back to try to fix this legislatively, but we're also hoping that this will all work out with the lawyers. If this were, the project will come to East Lime, we want to work in partnership to try to find the right place. I'll let Joe's personal thing just lie there. The dog park, you know, that's a place to put it, instead of purchasing land. We have 300 acres at Darapon for the $4.3 million. It was under Mr. Farmica's administration, you know that. The dog park will be about two acres of that 300 acres. So we didn't spend $403 million for a dog park. We have walking trails. 200 acres is open space. It will remain open space forever. We do have 100 acres in which we are now putting a communication tower on it for our police and fire to be able to communicate with one another. We will eventually put a water tower on there when we start putting water into some of those side streets off of Chesterfield and expanding the water system. That's not in our plans currently. And yes, there's some open space. And when we bought that land, we said, well, someday, the next generation might want some town land in the north side of town. So let's keep that 100 acres. It might be ball fields, it might be a school, it might be a firehouse, who knows? Because we all probably won't be here. But we do have that 100 acres. One thing we could do with two acres out of the 100 acres is put a fenced-in area, two fenced-in areas for a dog park. So Moody's rating, any town in the state of Connecticut that has a lower fund balance than the money we get from the state. So in other words, we get $9 million from the state, we have $5 million in the bank in our rainy day fund. Any town that qualified under that, and there were, I think, 35 towns and it may have been more, made that list, which means they're reviewing our Moody's rating. We should have a lot more money in our rainy day account. Moody's wants us to have 12 million. We have five. But I get increased taxes to put money away. Find efficiencies, absolutely. Come in with a zero budget. No one would want that more than me. But to get to seven, 7 million more in our rainy day account, we got to go find that money somewhere and we got to, it's got to come from the tax base. In the meantime, we have 5 million. We do not want to dip into it. What Moody's is looking for is if we were hit with that $4 million hit from, from, from the governor or 8 million, how would we have paid for that? Would we have sent a supplemental bill out or would we have tapped into our budget reserve? If we hit our budget reserve, we would have lost our rating. It's a, it's a direct correlation. It's a trigger. We are hoping not to do that. As we've discussed in previous meetings, the budget came with 300,000 extra padded in the budget. We were criticized for that. I hear you, but we knew we'd be getting some cuts. We got 400 and change of cuts. 300,000 is going to come from the proper planning for this. The 100,000 will come out of department head, department head budgets. Legal fees, we can, we can pull out the books and find out what Mr. Farmica's administration paid for legal fees up there. It was a substantial amount with a developer that was trying to build, buy the land for, I think, $4.3 million as well. But we can pull those records out. Water Department, the Department of Public Health ruled that we do not have two water companies in town. We don't. Mr. Mingo made the complaint because he didn't win the vote at a water and sewer meeting. That's where this whole friction started that evening. And we voted to do it a certain way. It's a 10-member Water and Sewer Commission that votes on this. 10 people voted to do, nine people voted to do it one way. So a complaint went up to the Department of Public Health. A complaint was answered by the Department of Public Health. It is not a water company. It is not a water company. The $400,000 of water meters, yes. Yes, that was the way this, 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 this application and this, this development was negotiated. Again, prior administration, but I'll live to defend it in that they also paid about a million dollars in fees to get into that water system and into that sewer system. So somewhere built into those fees with $40,000 of water meters. Could we, if they, they're going for another 120 apartments up at, to the zoning commission. I don't think that's going to come up this week. I think it's going to come up in a couple weeks. We've been talking, I think, the water sewer, Water and Sewer Department's been talking. Hopefully, zoning and when we make this deal, we're not going to make that same deal with the water company. If 120 more apartments are going up there, we're not going to set it up the same way. If so, we're going to make them pay for it. It's not the precedent we want to set. Trailers. We had no idea those trailers were happening. That was a Parks and Rec Department and Commission vote and decision. I've pointed out the same issues. You can't have trailers at McCooks. It says it rated in the deed. I brought it to them on Monday morning. It was a disaster, first of all, and I think it got way out of hand. It will not happen again. That's my order. But the Parks and Rec Commission approved that, not this commission. It did not come before this commission. As you all... As you all know, that's not in our purview. They should not have trailers up there. The bandstand was, was met with, it's not a commercial endeavor. It's a recreational facility. It's not a commercial thing. We don't raise money. If money's raised, it's donations for a theater group, or I think the Sam Smith House had a fundraiser there. But it's not a commercial endeavor. It's a park and rec facility, like a basketball court is a park and rec facility. So the lawyer agreed to that, and we are very sensitive on that, especially where we put it, because it could be in certain areas, but structures can't be in certain areas up there. So that's why we moved the location of the bandstand. Is there anything else I need to cover, or does anyone else would like to make a comment?
No, I would just like to have added to the agenda of the next meeting, a discussion of proposals for the budget reductions, or either budget reductions, or redistribution of funds if needed.
Yeah. No problem at all. Anything else for the record? Take a motion to adjourn? I'll take, I'll talk to you afterwards. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, Sam?
Aye.
All right. We're out.